Good morning. It's nine o'clock, April the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, and our regular Commissioners' Court meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda is a world call by our County Clerk, Mary Jane Goriata.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Judge Ratno.
President.
Commissioner Mendoza.
President.
Commissioner Elizondo.
Here.
Commissioner Solis.
President.
And Commissioner Gata. We have a quorum, Judge.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Next item is our invocation by Dr. Roger Minner, Commissioners' spokesman. Morning, Dr. Minner.
Good morning, good morning.
Morning, Governor.
If you avail your heads with praise, we pray. Our Father's source of all, we gather together this morning with the general understanding that we're here to transact the business of governing. But Father, we ask that you help us to step back to obtain a new perspective on what we're involved in. You have given us the privilege of self-government, and at the same time, you're willing to be an active part of that process with your guidance and wisdom. So the new perspective that we need to grasp is that you are involved in the affairs of men, just as Benjamin Franklin reminded us as the Constitution was being framed. So today, Father, we invite you into this place to give guidance and grant wisdom to our leaders, strengthen their confidence in that they will perceive and accept your help. And may you grant our leaders health and strength and body and mind and spirit for the tasks that lie ahead, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Commissioners, Montezapal is almost gone last. Any communication with the county still happening the last two weeks? Well, it's last week since we last met. I think we have had some vaccinations, continuing vaccinations, and, you know, very happy with what the way that the county has progressed. Commissioner, I think you probably have some stats on that, on how, with the percentages of our population that have been vaccinated. I think we've done a very good job, all the volunteers. We still have a lot of folks that still need to come through for us and get vaccinated so we can put this virus hopefully behind us. We've, I think, we've got, I'm thinking with Chief, Abiaya, who can't be with us today, he had another meeting, said there was going to be testing Tuesday and Wednesday at Pavilion once again. And I think, I'm not sure if we have vaccinations this week, are you aware?
I think we're looking for the latter part of the week, Judge.
latter part of the week?
Yes.
Okay.
And based on your last update, Judge, then we put a flyer together to show how the different communities in this area were doing. So as of last week, I'm sure that might change a little bit, but we're at sixty-one point zero-two percent at least one dose here in Zapata County. Six seniors and older fully vaccinated, forty-seven point sixty-nine percent. Fifty-five and over, at least one dose, seventy-nine point fifty-three percent. And sixty-five and older fully vaccinated, which is a great accomplishment, sixty-seven point fifty-eight percent. So I think considering the uphill battle we faced at the beginning, we've been able to offer and roll out those vaccines for our community, I think we're doing very well for the other communities in our area.
And then we could, I guess eighty percent mark is the, is the.
For the majority or is what you're right on the end. So we're almost there, we're very close, we're very close. I think we have a great team in place, and I think we've done a great job of vaccinating our community.
Very well. I think we don't have any active tests, I mean positive tests, any COVID cases, so that's good news. We had some confirmations last week, but they were not active, I think they were just backlog. So we're good, we don't have currently any active cases in our community.
And I know that Chief Abiaya mentioned, spoke to him on Friday, that testing will be Tuesday and Wednesday of this week.
Yes.
At the three.
Okay, very well. Any other communications?
The project at the ball ramp was finished this weekend as well, so we're able to extend the ball ramp already. We should remove the piles of dirt today and tomorrow.
Okay.
It's still out of order, but we're using the secondary ramp, that's still working in our favor as of now. So just wanted to put.
Yeah, we have some access, I know the releases have increased from Amistad, but a lot of it is being just passed through for downstream users. Hopefully, we can get some good rain and put some water in our lake. It sure is a sad, sad sight to see, but, I mean, we've been through this before, and hopefully, it can turn around really quick with some rainy periods, hopefully. But that ramp, I think, will be in place for years to come, and it's going to add a lot of value to the area.
Definitely. We got a lot of compliments from the community and officials, and I want to thank the Commissioners for.
Take advantage of that, of the situation and improve that area there. That's good, Commissioner.
Good job, Commissioners showing a strong initiative there at the baseball ramp. I think that's one of our main attractions here for our community, so it's important that we maintain it regardless of.
And Saninazo, we worked on a community garden that we started. We have Javier also, he's from Texas A&amp;M in Laredo.
Uh huh.
And he's helping us build this community garden in Saninazo. And we're going to try to get one here in Zapata County again, we don't have.
Is that a plaza or what?
We're doing it at the baseball field in Saninazo.
The baseball field, okay. Very well, yes, good. Communications, move on to public comments. This section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioners' Court on any items on the agenda. The public is to address the court at this time. Now moving on to item number six, is approval of invoices. Any updates, Commissioners? We had invoices from April the ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, to April the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, for your approval.
Motion to approve, Judge, the amount is nine hundred thousand seven hundred and four point two.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve invoices as presented, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion, although the pair is the eye?
Eye.
Motion carried. Item number seven is approval of checks issued, and we had checks from April the ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, to April the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion to approve the amount nine hundred thousand seven four point two.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion, although the pair is the eye?
Eye.
Motion carried. We'll move on to the action items, Commissioners. We will deliberate and consider action. On item number nine is to approve an agreement between Sista Shore WCID and Zapata County for interim financing to be provided by Zapata County for the water interconnection between Zapata Waterworks and Sista Shore WCID. Anybody from Sista Shore's here in the water district? Two weeks ago or sometime last week, I did receive a call from the water plant manager. With the lake levels, the way they are, they're having issues in bringing the raw water for treatment to the, to the water plant. I think, on average, the water plant manager was telling me they need three hundred gallons a minute to meet the needs of the residents there, and because of the lake level, they're only able to pump about half of that. So I know we've been working on an interconnection with them so we can supply Zapata Waterworks water to Sista Shore's. They do have, they did, I guess, request a grant a while back with USDA. It's still in process. I did reach out to USDA last week and say if it was possible for the county to help those residents out by providing the interim financing to do that interconnection because of severity of the situation, and they agreed it's possible. I don't see Mr. Gonzalez here. I don't have a cost estimate, Commissioners, of exactly, he should have a cost estimate. I think if we can recall this, hopefully Mr. Gonzalez will tell them, I think, for us to take action without knowing exactly what the, the cost.
I'll text him, I'll text the Gonzalez.
He should be here because he has other items on the agenda.
Yes.
And we have to recall it, Judge.
Yeah, when we call it, I, I, but basically what we would do is, is fund the project, they already have a contractor that's been approved through the agency and by the Board of Sista Shore's. They would start the project immediately. We would fund it until the USDA funds would come to the, to the Waterworks, and then they would refund.
Reimburse it.
So I think we would provide the immediate help to the residents, and I think we should do it, I just want to make sure what, how much the cost is. And Mr. Gonzalez told me he would have a cost estimate, it's on the contract, but I don't have him with me right now, so we'll recall this one. Item number ten is to approve the request from Zapata County Independent School District for the use of the Zapata Community Center on May the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, for the junior senior prom. Commissioners, I received a request from the superintendent of school that they were considering in having a prom this year after not being able to, I guess, have one last year, and he would like for the court to approve the use of the community center on that date. They, he did, Mr. Gonzalez did send, they would have protocols in place. As far as attendance, only seniors and their dates would be permitted to attend. Testing, seniors and district employees would be required to be, to have the rapid test before the event. Screening, all attendees will be screened for symptoms. Face masks, all individuals must wear face coverings in accordance with CDC and ZISD guidelines. Social distancing will also be in place. Dress code and presentation, so it, I think it's a way for the, for the, I guess, to try to get the seniors a, a way to get back to close to normal as possible.
There's a lot that they missed out on this year.
Yes.
With COVID, and it's unfortunate. I'll make a motion, Judge, that we approve.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis to approve the use of the community center. I have spoken to our director, Laura Abates, and I think we can have the center ready for May the eighth. I also talked with Ms. Platter, who's been doing the vaccinations, and she said that it will be fine, that they can move their equipment out for a while, and then we can place it back and then schedule.
Judge, and my motion would apply only to this event, that I don't think we should open it up to others.
Exactly.
This is a special exception we're making then, especially because the school is taking responsibility to enforce our restrictions.
Right.
But private events, senior dances, weddings, all that, I don't think we're ready to.
I think, I think Ms. Gonzalez is taking some reservations for the fall, but for now, I think, well, no, I think we'll have a better idea by the end of summer where our vaccination efforts are and where, if we need to continue with that center, so, yes, so I agree with what you're saying.
And just for the community, know that the Saninazo Civic Center is open.
Sure.
Yes.
If anybody calls Laura, Saninazo is open.
And of course, the main reason is just because we are using that site for the vaccination, so it is allowed to set up and take everything down and reset up again, because that's our main hope for vaccination.
Right, exactly. Morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
So we got a motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis to approve the use of the community center on May the eighth. Any discussion, although the pair is the eye?
Eye.
Motion carried. Commissioner Gonzalez, we, thank you for, we were on item number nine, is Sista Shore's. I was telling the Commissioners the situation as to the difficulty the district is having in pumping raw water from the lake because of the low lake levels and how the interconnection could be approved, that they're in an emergency situation, and I guess USDA has agreed.
They, they have the. This is the letter that was sent from USDA, deal from Sista Shore to USDA in reference to that, and.
Do we have an estimate of cost, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
To finish, we do have a cost.
Yes, we do. The estimate of cost is ninety-nine thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. That project was bid out by Sista Shore's, and during their bidding process, they have selected a contractor, and in that, that.
Would that be a local contractor that was selected?
It was a local contractor that was selected.
And the amount is fully reimbursed?
The, well, the, that's what we have requested, so that the county can be reimbursed for their funds. And we sent, we sent requests to Mr. Gomez with the USDA, letting him know that the water levels at the Falcon Lake had reached pretty close to an all-time low. The quality of the water that we're getting is very shallow, and we really needed to have that interconnection between Zapata County Waterworks and Sista Shore's. I spoke with the judge, and the judge said, you know, let's, let's make that request formal so that we can try to see if we can help them out and make that interconnection. They, they are reviewing a cost overrun. When we bid the project, they initially had seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, and then when, this is for this line and the water plant improvements, which includes repairs to the sand pipe, an additional ground storage tank, three high-service pumps, two groundwater pumps, water filter upgrades, and the center connection line. But the center connection line, we bid it as a separate contract, so it's considered contract number two, and that was ninety-nine thousand six hundred and sixty.
In your experience, Commissioner Gonzalez, in working with these types of projects, do you foresee any problems with them reimbursing us for the amount?
No, usually what they are doing particular about is having it in writing to them so that they can then let us know, yes, you can go ahead and, and fund it, and then we'll reimburse you. With the funds from USDA, you're sure we're going to have those.
I did speak with Mr. Gomez also, he, he felt that it was, it was very possible that we were able to do this. I do wanted to receive confirmation, I did want to include it in the agenda to make sure that if the county Commissioners agree, if it's a form of this, we can have it in place and start works immediately. Once USDA says, you know what, we can do this, and, and those, then we can supply the funding to Sista Shore's, which will start the project immediately, and then once USDA funds the project, Sista Shore will return the money, reimburse the money to the county. So we will need an agreement between, a MOU between Sista Shore's and the county also to be able to receive those reimbursements.
Basically, putting the bill.
Could we do an approval, just like you mentioned, with pending USDA approval?
Yes.
So, so that way, it's already approved by court, if USDA approves.
Yeah, I'll make a motion with that, with that clause, that the pending of course confirmation from USDA on the full reimbursement.
And then we'll develop an MOU between Sista Shore's and the county. I think if we need it, if needed, to, to, I guess, formally, in terms of that agreement, Mr. Phil, is that, do you think that would be required?
We're, we're essentially, can you explain?
We're providing the interim financing for the project. Sista Shore's, more than I believe, will receive funding for this project.
Okay.
But it might take some time, and their need is immediate, they need to have the water flowing, but they're not pumping out of the, of water for to supply the residents currently.
Okay.
So we want to step in, help them out, and get this project going sooner rather than later.
And would the court be considering this a public health?
Yes, it's running a public health emergency here.
I think under the auspices of that, Judge, I think it'd be okay before that, based on those services.
Yes, it's running a public health emergency, they, they did request that we could provide them emergency water to them.
Judge, I'll modify my motion that we approve it, and then we authorize them to get started immediately with the project.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, and seconded by Commissioner Solis.
Here's a breakdown, on the second one, contract number two.
Okay. Okay, and this would be close to a hundred thousand dollars, the county would be funding Sista Shore. I think we could still develop an agreement between Sista Shore's and Zapata County, just have a formal agreement that we're doing this.
We definitely can do that. We do have a current agreement for, for this particular water line, but it was, that agreement was for when the line gets installed and they use water, it is going to be metered, they will have to pay the county a fee for that water, but we didn't have one for this intro, so we can, we can develop one and.
I'm glad you brought that up, it will be metered if this is so.
Yeah, it is.
And they will be buying the water.
They will be buying it at wholesale, just as Highway sixteen Water District does, it would be the same.
I think it's something that will be very necessary for residents right now. So we got a motion and a second, any other discussion, although the pair is the eye?
Eye.
Motion carried. Item number eleven is to approve the purchase of an electric time stamp with digital clock display. Judge, give a, introduce this item, Commissioners. I don't know, do we have, I thought we had time clocks on, are they off this, Commissioners? Are you aware?
This is something different, Judge.
It is something different.
There is a time clock for clocking in, this is for stamping, I guess, or.
Stamp stamping documents, time stamping. How much does it cost?
I saw an eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's eight twenty-nine point seventy-five.
So that's not something that comes out of our supplies? No?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I mean, I'm sure the budgets are very limited as far as supplies.
Yeah, because we fund the minimal amounts for. I'll second Commissioner Solis's motion.
Okay.
Okay, so this is for the documents. A motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza to approve the purchase of the electric time stamp and digital clock display, although the pair is the eye?
Eye.
Motion carried, yes, the amount is eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Item number twelve is to approve the purchase of a mini split for Judge to the P. Preising One. She did also call me on this, you know, we, I guess, last year, we added a small addition to her office there, behind the nutrition center. She says the unit that supplied the office or cooled the office before is not doing enough to cool the, I guess, the additional space.
Motion approved.
Motion by.
And the cost is six hundred dollars for the local contractor?
Yes, six hundred dollar mini split. She's, I, I, I asked her if we could not upgrade the existing ductwork and use a system. She said that because of the limited attic space, the contract itself, that it's the only way to go is the mini split. So I got motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, any discussion, although the pair is the eye?
Eye.
Motion carried. Item number thirteen is to restrict political signs, camps, tents, heat service stations, arts gatherings, promoting a candidate, candidate or proposition on the ballot and/or any other form of advertising in whatever form or shape, or a political candidate or candidate or propositions on the ballot seeking to influence official voters of any kind on all county property during early voting and election days. This action is sought to encourage free and fair elections within Zapata County and is sought to reduce or eradicate voter intimidation by political campaigns at polling places. Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, I'm bringing this item before you all for consideration. I did speak to our county attorney regarding this, just to make sure that we were, it was something you were able to enforce here vocally. Being a candidate myself, having run three elections, and now as a Commissioner, I hear quite a few complaints every election cycle, of things that go on on the grounds here at the courthouse. I feel that we should do away with this, I, I think it will open it up to more people being comfortable to vote here at the courthouse and at the polling places on election day. It is something that I have brought up before. Of course, in the past, when I had brought it up, there was not enough support for it, then it got to the point that said, you know what, I'm going to bring it to the table if it passes great, if not, you know, I did my part, because every time that I give complaints to people regarding this, you know, I've told every single one of them that I was going to bring it to this court for consideration, so I'm doing my part in that aspect. As a candidate, I don't feel that it affects anyone to not be here on the grounds during the election. I think people know who they're going to vote for and the reasons why they're going to vote for that candidate. So I don't personally believe that it makes a difference or makes it or breaks it for any candidate. So I fully support this action, and I'm bringing it here for the.
But this is the first time you ever bring it to.
As formal action, yes, Commissioner, but I have brought it up to this court, and I can't go into too much detail because the time that I've brought it up has been executive session, but I have brought it up in the past, and when I have brought it up, the last time I brought it up, which was before I ran this past March, the reasons were that it was not enough time, it was not enough notice for the candidates, we weren't giving the candidates enough notice of this change, and the other comment was that it was tradition. So.
You know, during this past election, especially the general election, and also in the primary, we did have some issues regarding whether or not political signs could be placed on county, county lands, especially, I mean, I think the higher ed center came into play also because some signage was, was placed on there, and we had horse signage on the plaza, and whether or not we could do that or not, I think, you know, it would have to take the Commissioners' Court actions to completely restrict that. I was getting requests to take them off, I didn't feel I had the authority to take them off without Commissioners' Court full approval of addressing the issue in its entirety. So I think we do need to address our limited space, our parking lots are not sufficiently large enough, and now with, with COVID voting guidelines in play, I think we need more room for, for our, you know, our polling places for our residents to feel free, and the space there is very limited, so.
And most importantly, it's going to give voters the privacy that they deserve, you know, as soon as they vote. So I'll, I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Elizondo, seconded by Commissioner Solis, I think it'll, it'll be a good thing, I think we've, I think candidates will save some money on, as far as on, on the food purchases.
And we also have to remember, Judge, that the regular daily business is still going on during this week, so we have our parking lots.
And if you're too proud, if there really is a crowded space and, and I don't know room.
Judge, in the previous election, when the Commissioner called and drafting this, I, I assisted the Commissioner, and I put an all-encompassing word of verbiage in this, of course, giving the court the, you know, the option to either remove, narrow it down, or keep it as is. But in the previous election, Judge, I saw numerous cases where it could possibly be, you know, voter intimidation by those individuals that, you know, run votes, you know, you could see it, I mean, it was clear as day, and the problem is that I can't serve as a witness and as a prosecutor at the same time, so it put me in a very difficult spot when I saw things like that now. And I think, in this day and age, we need to encourage civic, people acting under civic duty to vote, and we need to get people, now it's more important than ever that we have to, we have individuals constantly posting, posting on social media that the, you know, the people we elected aren't doing this, aren't doing that, or, well, this is where your voice gets heard, we're in the polls, and we need to be able to make it where they can come in, vote as they please, and vote their conscience, not because they're being intimidated by Primo Juan or Tio, Tio Joe, you know what I mean?
I think this should have been done a long time ago, but you know, when we're the president, you know.
Right. Well, you know, the thing is, we hadn't done before because of whatever reason, but the, the option to do it there is there now, so.
And you see, it's very evident, when you have ninety percent of the voters coming in through the back door.
That's right.
There's a problem.
And, and I can attest to that, Judge. There was all these individuals, you know, there's, one of the days where it was real bad weather conditions, there wasn't anybody coming in, but there actually was a bunch of people coming in the back way because they're avoiding the, the political press, and I, I, I think we need to do as much as possible to get people to come in and vote free, you know, and.
Sure.
And this is parallel for everyone, everyone's on equal footing, everyone's on equal footing, it's not advantageous to any one candidate or other, it's equal footing, and during the general election, we had that whole ordeal with, you know, different camps, Democratic and Republican, during that, that we had plaster all over our, I, I found that to be an eyesore, you know, and, you know, I couldn't understand people wanting support the candidate, fine, support the candidate, but for the county to be allowing that, I, I don't know.
I think this will make this, no, that's.
That's right.
So if we're taking this action, it'll give us a firmer ground. And also, you know, we have the political signs along, well, especially here at the courthouse, we do have a sprinkler system.
We have a minimum.
Every, every political cycle, we have to go back there and fix it again, so I think.
The ashes being dumped on our, on our grounds as well, Judge, leaving holes, burn holes.
So I think it's a good thing, and I think as a candidate, any candidate should, should not have a problem with it. So we got a motion and a second?
Judge, but may, I, I do agree with every member of the court, and I'm going back, I think, here nineteen years and going back many years back, we're, we're being visited by the Texas Association of Counties, and I did a call in Mal, that said, my God, where do we park? What's going on, is this a county fair? And in our life, within, with the association for almost twenty years, and nowhere in the city of Texas have we encountered, you know, what you have surrounding this beautiful courthouse. Smoke all over the place, we can't find a parking space, hey, Roman, where do we park? So I brought it up many years back, but like you said, you mentioned, Judge, that it's tradition and stuff, and it's the court that makes this decision, and I thought every single one of you, this. single one of these, uh, voters do get intimidated. When they're trying to walk in this building and somebody's over there looking at you and you can't say hello to anybody because, you know, it didn't mean that I'm gonna vote for you because, or for him because I didn't say hello and people feel intimidated.
Sure.
So this will greatly help for voters to come on and vote and I agree with every member of the court.
I don't think it will.
With the council that, uh, we should clean up a rack and let people come into the voting place and, you know, exercise their right to vote for whoever they support, but let's get all this signage out of our county properties. Let's allow the parking for the public because we're running business on those days.
Sure.
So, you know, I just, I'm not voting member of this court, but I, I still agree a hundred percent with every member of the court.
Your opinion, your opinion, value, something else, and I, I think, uh, exactly, I don't think any candidate should have an issue with, with, with what the court is doing.
Judge, I, I did want it because this was a blanket statement, Judge, and, and I'm sure the court would be okay with allowing, uh, the individual camps to come in, uh, after the polls have closed, in which to see the election results, Judge. In that case, I think that, that, that probably thinks some fingering with, uh, what the court seeks to adopt would be all right, but during polling hours, uh, for none of that to-
Well, I mean, I think as far as, uh, on election night when we're waiting for the report-
Right. So there would have to be a caveat like that, Judge, just so people can come in and hear the result because they're always announced on the steps, you know, so.
I think the, the voting has already taken place.
That's right, it has, so it, it would just have to be, because I said all gatherings on, uh, uh, early voting and election.
While voting is ongoing.
Right, right, and, but, but the, while, while the, while the time voting. So just wanted to clarify the issue because I'm sure we don't have a gift during those elections and you're gonna give a party with all those calls, Judge, so I think as long as it's, uh, clear there, uh, if that's what the court is inclined to.
I, I think as far as individuals gathering outside the courthouse, they have to hear the results and I don't get involved.
Yeah, because the poll is over.
Yes, right.
The poll, polling takes a couple of-
Yes, okay. You got a motion, like, did you get anywhere, Judge?
Yes, Elizondo.
Oh, Elizondo and-
It was Elizondo making motions, Solis.
Okay. Any other discussion? All of the fairies say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I'll go first.
Item number fourteen is to review and approve change order number five and contract amendment number four for Zapata County wastewater treatment plant project. Gonzalez, we're still working on the treatment plan, I thought?
Yes, sir. We have, we have plenty left over.
Okay.
And, um, we spoke with, uh, Eric Keener with, uh, USPA and on the Heflinville office and he mentioned that we have roughly about seventy-two thousand dollars left over.
You got some funds or something, or?
We visited with the lawyer and his staff and looked at some of the things that they, that they wanted or needed there. We are requesting some, um, some lab equipment.
Okay.
And we are requesting to put in a, um, a return po- a returning pipe from the racetrack oxidation area to the oxidation area that's further north, it's still the older one.
Yes.
But so that, I think at some point they wanna eliminate that middle one and so we'll have it interconnected to the other one. Uh, it's, the cost is for the contractor to do that was, um, thirty-nine thousand dollars, thirty-nine thousand seventy-one and forty-seven cents. And the cost of the materials, there was an estimate for, for the lab equipment that they needed was nine thousand four hundred and seventy-eight and twenty-six cents. We'll get updates on those and that, those are the, the items, uh, that we have at this point.
I think we should use every penny that we-
Wait, on, on the contract amendment, we're also looking, uh, for, um, to be able to, uh, complete the project we had done, a, a permit amendment for the water, uh, wastewater treatment plant and we've already submitted that, we had, uh, billed, uh, Mr. Trevino's office and told him, we'd see if we could get it funded through this project and there were some funds there, so we included that cost, uh, to see if we can get that funded on that. That is, that, uh, permit amendment was, uh, ten thousand and the, the remaining portion of the, uh, inspection for the facilities that are gonna be installed was, uh, twelve thousand nine hundred. So that, that is the, the amendment on that. I can pass this on to you, Judge, so that you can review.
Commissioners, I need a motion.
I want a motion, a second.
Motion by Commissioner Solis to approve the change order number five and contract amendment number four. Seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, any discussion? All of the fairies say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Commissioner Gonzalez, have we listened to any, uh, generators for those, for the water departments?
We, uh, on the generators for the water department, uh, I know that Mr. Salinas had a gentleman that provided a generator backup services for the food pantry in Laredo and he came down to Zapata and visited with Mr. Salinas and, uh, looked at the, uh, the meters here at the courthouse and, uh, at some other, other locations. I do need to get with Mr. Chapa because I know we have, some of our lift stations have generators, it's just that they need, uh, they need some maintenance on, the, the hours on those generators is, is low, maybe like, uh, twenty-five to fifty hours that they've been used, it's just that they haven't ran in maybe eight to ten years. So they, they need some maintenance to see if they will run the, the engines.
Which is not a bad thing, they wouldn't have to use them that much.
Right, but-
But we need to make sure that they're, they're in working condition for when we do anything.
Yes, that's correct.
Does this equipment, just like any vehicle, you need to get parked for a long time, don't you have to turn them on like, you know, every-
They should be cycling, you're absolutely correct, they should be cycling every, every week for thirty minutes and maybe, uh, right now they are not cycling every week for that, they're not cycling at all. So, so when the power goes out, they should automatically kick on and they're not. So that's what we encountered when we had the freeze, that some of the generators that we currently have did not kick on. We did get them running with, uh, the assistance of our, our local electricians, but we do need to do some, some maintenance on some of the existing ones and then get Mr. Salinas the list of the ones that where we don't have, uh, the lift stations where we don't have a backup, either put in a generator or my suggestion on the lift station would be to put a, uh, a diesel driven backup pump. So that's what we have at the Villenio, uh, lift station, as soon as you cross by the West Western, there's an engine there, that's a backup, kinda like a backup generator, but it's, it has a pump attached to it, so in essence you have three pumps, the two that are in the well that are running with normal power and then when the power goes out, that third pump turns on, but it's diesel driven. And that one works on floats, so if the water level starts going up on the lift station, it's gonna turn on regardless if power went out or not.
Is there, is there any monies on that, sorry, Mr. Gonzalez, is there any monies on that for the stimulus, part of the disaster relief?
Some amount of money can be used for that.
So, okay.
But we haven't received it yet.
We haven't, we're still waiting.
Uh, which, I think, uh, my understanding is, uh, of course, the county was, uh, and Lewis, I guess, in mind to receive two point seven five million.
Right.
Uh, the-
Was that-
But every time we'll be receiving half of that, I think, within the next thirty to sixty days and then the other half within three hundred and sixty-five days, so maybe next year. So they'll, uh, we should be getting half, uh-
And is that, is that part of just the stimulus, Judge, or is that including like disaster relief as well?
No, that's just the stimulus.
Okay. Cause we might, uh, be inclined, I don't think anybody in Zapata County wants to live through that, uh, that hellish week we, we really lived through. Uh, so I wonder if, uh, there's any monies from the disaster relief-
There may be, um-
In, in reference to assisting us at least in maybe getting, uh, you know, higher voltage type generators or, uh, just maybe just uprating what we've got or just getting them out of work.
Well, let's see at, at our water and wastewater treatment plants, I know we need one generator at the water plant, I think we're, uh, we're good as far as the raw water intake and then the high pressure pumps, uh, generator we have on there. Our wastewater treatment mat is, is set up now with the, with the renovation, so we're pretty good. Some of our lift stations might need some help, but, but what we've been dealing with them is using transfer pumps, diesel driven, uh, transfer pumps, so, uh, there, and I think, uh, we found out that we absolutely need some type of generating power here at the courthouse, so that would be the priority, which would be, uh, a generator at the courthouse and the one at the, at the water treatment plant, uh, I think is, is kind of the priority. And Mr. Salinas, I think, I've mentioned already, has, uh, looked at the situation and, and-
Yes, let me give the court an update. Uh, Friday, this past Friday at ten o'clock in the morning, I got a gentleman, uh, that came in from Corpus. He is the chief electrical installer for the company that we're, um, gonna get a quote from, the company inside Houston. Uh, since I sit on board of the South Texas Food Bank in Laredo, we went ahead and contacted over, um, three or four of the largest food banks in the state of Texas, the, the board, gave our executive director the, um, go ahead to see what we're using, cause we have a brand new facility, well, it's a, the new warehouse that we moved into not too long ago, but we got a huge freezer there then. Uh, thank God that nothing spoiled on us. Uh, so we gave her the, uh, authorization to look for a, um, company to come and install backup generators. Well, when I found out, I asked her for the contact, so I contacted Mr. Donnie, uh, from Houston and they do hold a government contract, like, uh, I wouldn't have to be-
A buy board, it's kind of like-
A buy board, sort of, so I said, uh, we need to send you that, so I'm gonna provide to the court and he's gonna provide the best government discount on these generators. Uh, now they, they come in from Mexico because they have assembled, but they need a warehouse and if you need something, send them to Laredo. So the turnaround will be very quick. Um, uh, the electrician that said with me at ten in the morning, we looked at the, all the power, um, breaker boxes here in the courthouse, he took a picture of the meter, then I took them to the water plant, which after I spoke from Sotterino, that's our priority when I spoke to the judge, where we treat the water. I think that was the one that didn't have power.
So as far as lift stations, I don't know if, what would be the better option, if, uh, side a few more of those transfer pumps that, that proven to be very effective and once, uh, one of those electric pumps goes out or, or having, uh, you know, more-
An onsite dedicated generator.
Yeah.
Uh, well-
Especially because of the lack of use, like you mentioned.
Well, I, I would, yeah, if, if we go with, I wouldn't recommend the generator, I would recommend the, uh, generator pump, so that it's basically like a third pump in the ground and, uh, you have a power outage or what happens to our lift station, right now the majority of them, not all of them, but a lot, a good, a good amount of them have, they have two pumps in the ground and usually because they're maybe twenty, twenty-seven years, thirty years old, one of them is usually at the shop being fixed and then the other one's in the ground, so you're down to one pump. So that pump then fails, then if we're having to take the vacuum truck, then luckily the county has a really good vacuum truck, we take the vacuum truck and we vacuum it out, you know, every, every day or every other day, or we'll put one of the, the diesel pumps that the, the judge is talking about.
The portable, uh-
Like, if we can handle it, Judge, and I guess whatever is better or more convenient for our-
I think something that we don't have to have, cause we've got over thirty lift stations, so if we're gonna-
They do have a couple of transfer pumps.
It's, it's gonna be hard if you're running that generator once a week, thirty, you know, thirty different pieces of equipment, I mean, if you go to the little, it's, um-
They do expect those stations daily, uh, the crew does, uh, I mean, you can, different crew members are assigned to five or six of the stations that, you know, have to go visit with, have a log that they have to sign up on, so that we prevent spills or we try to mitigate spills and, and, uh, you know, look at the pump, whether it's, it's working or not working, if it turned on, if it's starting to fail and if it's down to one, we, we wanna, you know, be able to visit those on a daily basis.
Fantastic.
And of course, the importance of having, uh, backup generator here, Judge, at the courthouse is because our phone system and internet go down and other places, of course, the sheriff's department-
Sure.
And their ability to receive those emergency calls, so it, it is necessary to have a-
We'll see what, uh, what recommendations come, uh, from the gentleman, that company?
The other thing I would like to mention, I know, um, so I did mention, uh, uh, those backup generators weren't backed, backed on us because they sit here without, they turned on.
Yep.
This one we have a mechanism, an automatic, that'll do it for all of you.
Cycle, cycle.
They'll be cycling here at this building and over at the water. So, yeah, so if we do acquire these two generators, um, they will have that, uh, I did request that, I didn't want them to have to go turn it on and okay, we're gonna turn it off and go power it off, shut down the, the electricity coming to the meter, so this will do it automatically.
Has he mentioned any type of financing plans or anything like that for the county? I know there are-
I, I did because Mr. Gonzalez and I have been speaking about contacting USPA and maybe we could get a USDA grant of funds for this, uh, backup generator instead of using county funds.
Right, right. Yeah, that's what I mentioned, faster.
Yes, that's why I've been, and moved to him.
We can look at that, um, certainly, uh-
Maybe we can fund a portion of it, or we can fund the whole thing, then if, if they can fund a portion of, uh, Mr. Gomez was here in Zapata about two, three weeks ago and we visited briefly with him and mentioned that the, uh, the freeze week or two that we had and he said that they do have some funding for generators, uh, he didn't specify whether we would get fully granted or we would get a partial grant, but even if it's a partial, it's not coming a hundred percent out of, out of general fund.
Something better now.
Anything will.
Mr. Salinas, maybe looking into, uh, the community center also just for future, you know, to see how much, look, look at the generator at the community center.
Uh, yeah, we can look at that, um, it's just, uh, you know, uh, process that we'd need to get the history for the past year on that building or use it to get the, the peak, uh, water, not the kilowatt hours. So the reason that we took the pictures of the meters, uh, Friday and on Saturday now we're sending a, an email to our electric provider, so I'm gonna get the, the high peak. So when the building goes out, the electricity, what kind of boost we need to get it up and on and then it'll diminish to the normal. So that's where they, they figure out the, the size of the generator that we can need. So, um, I'm sending that request to the provider for the water treatment plant in this building and later on, any other buildings that we have to, um, give, you know, send information provided to Donnie and the, and the office.
We are, I think our, our fire department would be another one.
The fire department. I know the people, the committee was aware that we had like a tax free this weekend for emergency supplies of, um, yeah, in Texas, something, it's called Texas, something, I can share it on Facebook. If you wanna buy any kind of generators, imagine, uh, anything that has to do with emergency, they have tax free.
It's coming this weekend?
Well, no, it was this week. So actually today is the last day to go to any kind of hardware store and buy whatever it's likely for emergency purposes, maybe tax free.
Good to know, sure.
I know, we got like, we missed it, but today, like, 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 or generators, and I was just wondering if you wanted a generator.
We'll move on to, so we already, did we look? Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So you can go for that.
Item number fifteen is to review water line interconnection between Zapata Water Works and Topten Rural Water Supply Corporation. If it was out there, I guess this is a long-term project, uh, located, uh, maybe not so long, I think we can, uh, have some other residents of Zapata County that are having water issues.
Probably the residents that have the worst experience during this winter storm, or the longer it's been, or the customers are blocking the rule.
That's correct.
So, Captain, the, uh, work well project that the court, uh, is, is very excited about, uh, starting, I think?
We would be looking about, uh, requesting some funding from, uh, either Congress, the Wales Office or USPA or, or one of them, or wherever that might be, but wanted to get the court's permission to, you know, uh, seek funding through different avenues. There is, uh, some, uh, interest in participating with the project from the, uh, the developer. They're just north of the, uh, Mesa Salinas Road and, um, you know, partnering up with the county and Topten Rural, so that, uh, maybe possibly, uh, getting some cost from the materials vendors to give an estimate to the, to the dirt in the court as to what would it cost if we were to fund the material only, developer funds all the construction and, um, then, uh, looking to see if we can put an emergency connection with, with a valve in the meter so that they do encounter another situation where they have no water, we can send water from, from our-
I don't think Topten Rural is equipped at this time, throws out a super service to that new development, I'm afraid.
They mentioned that they, they could not and, uh, if, uh, so I didn't know if, if that development was in their jurisdictional area, so I asked them first, because I thought it was in their area and they said no, that their area is from Mesa Salinas Road South, so that they didn't have, I asked if they had an issue, if they requested water from either Chester Shore or Zapata County and they said no.
So is that Chester Shore jurisdictional area or?
No, it, it's, it's a no man's land, it's, right now they're, they're not in any, I No, it it's it's a no man's land, it's, right now they're, they're not in any, I guess, they would call under Zapata County, because, uh, they're, Zapata County, we do not, Zapata County Water Works does not serve as a whole county.
Right.
But they're not in anybody's area, Sista Shore's area is just a subdivision, and that's, that's their area.
Do we have any lines out there?
County?
Do, yeah, that would possibly be, you know.
There is a lot, the the nearest line with, the court have just approved to extend from the, what it is, the Dollar General, to, uh, Sista Lane, which is the the first line in in the first street going into Sista Shore. That's the interconnection between Zapata and Sista Shore. From that point south to Mesa Salinas is roughly about two point five miles. Uh, so you're looking at about thirteen thousand two hundred meter feet. We would, we would recommend a six inch line, so we'd put a few fire hydrants along the way for fire protection, for our fire staff. And, um, maybe, uh, putting in a, a, uh, a vault for the interconnection with Falcon River Water, so that we could pass water to them.
So is is that we're requesting your decision, or is that to go out for for pricing for that project?
This is to, so that I can get.
Just, I guess it would be an update, uh.
It it, yeah.
I think we can take action on it, I know, Commissioners, we we have no, uh, no cost estimates, uh.
I have a cost estimate, but it's just a cost estimate, it's it's a, it's a budgetary cost estimate, so that if if we go for funding from USDA, somebody else, we can, uh, you know, request for funds, but if we're gonna fund it through the county, it's totally different, because you'd be looking at just straight direct costs from the materials and then not the contractor's portion. And so all that, once you break it down, it it is.
I did submit some, uh, I guess, health, uh, to the commissioner's office for the whole Falcon River Water District, Zapata County. I don't know if it would be funded or not, but, uh, maybe that could be included, but, uh.
Well, we, and we learned something, uh, pretty valuable, Judge, that we didn't realize how many service meters Falcon River had for some of the county. I think it was, uh, fourteen hundred?
Well, accounts, all the accounts were over a thousand, some fourteen hundred was, a lot of them are closed, but they have a thou- about a one thousand accounts Falcon River does in our county.
Active accounts. Active accounts.
Yeah, that would be.
If, if sometime down the future, they could become some of the kind of waterworks resident, uh, or customers, and we would then control against their their water answerer means or services uh, for our county residents.
Right, I think long term, I think that would be something that, uh, I think we should be able to take care of our own residents.
And get here.
Uh, so, I think so. Uh, and we did submit for quite substantial funding for that, I don't know if it would be kind of yelling, but we did submit for, I think, uh, I I have had informal talks with Falcon River, uh, about, and they're for sure, they told me they they could not, uh, supply a new development with water. Uh, but I haven't, uh, had talked to them sufficient to say whether parts of their district, or whether they would be interested in us supplying them with emergency water, uh.
I did ask that.
You have asked that?
I asked Mr. Alan Ramos, uh, their their water engineers, if if we were to reconnect a line between Zapata and Falcon, if, you know, they would be okay with that, and he was very excited.
I I think I don't say, if you would say no, I.
No, he 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 said they have, they have the part, with their, within their system, the hardest part is is the, is the northern part of their s- of their district, which is the Terposan, but Mesa Salinas area, and he says, they have, they have a booster pump.
They have the tail end of their service area, isn't it?
That's right, they have a booster pump in Chihuahua.
Right.
That booster pump from Chihuahua services all the way to Mesa Salinas, and I think there are tanks there, only have like eighty five hundred gallons.
That's not big enough?
No, it's not enough, and then some other lines to their ranches are two inches in diameter, there's not adequate, so it affects.
There's a lot of infrastructure.
So, so what what do you, what what was, what do you recommend for this item, then?
On this item, it's just, uh, if if we can, uh, seek funding, I mean, I don't wish to, we already committed for some funding, and if we can, if we could be allowed to seek funding through other avenues. Uh, and then we still could come to the court for for approval or review, but, uh, we just, uh, we.
So, so as far as a cost estimate on the on the on the material?
We put in thirteen thousand two hundred meter feet of pipe, we put in forty dollars a meter foot. The, most of the vendors, the Ferguson Materials and the other material company out of the valley, had mentioned that the cost of resin to make the pipe has increased significantly. So we put that as a budget number, uh, it's construction and materials budget number, forty dollars a meter foot. So that comes to, uh, five hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars for that portion. And then we put in fittings valves, restraints, and meter with bypass assembly, that usually requires like a a vault, and then some, some fire hydrants at, you know, maybe every every thousand feet or something like that, and we put in forty thousand dollars for that item.
So the forty dollars per per meter foot, is that for just this, uh, material?
Material.
No, no, that's what I said, that's that's materials and construction.
Yeah, well, what, but we'd be only interested in the materials, that part of it.
Okay, if you're gonna be, then then I I would need to bring a number with just materials only for, like.
I mean, because you mentioned the contract, uh, developer is is, uh, would maybe able to provide the the labor to.
Correct, yes. So, yes, the con- the contractor did offer to provide.
So that number could, uh, decrease significantly, is.
Oh, yeah, I'm just, you're gonna be looking at maybe a hundred thousand for materials only.
Yes.
Uh, about about a hundred to maybe a hundred and fifty on on material only, because the pipe costs roughly about six, six dollars and fifty cents a foot?
I I think we should, uh, try to exhaust any any grant funding that that may, and if if it doesn't happen, then then the court will make a decision whether we wanna proceed with buying just the material and 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 the developer provides the labor.
And I think that's what you're asking, to be able to go out and look for money.
Yeah, like if I go to request for monies, I'm gonna submit them just for materials only, I'm gonna submit a full cost, because they're gonna require it to be paid out formally, and.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Can I make a motion that we authorize Commissioner Solis and Premier to go out and then look for funding for this water line project?
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, thinking about Commissioner Solis, any discussion, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge.
Uh, we've got a resolution and proclamations, Commissioners, is to adopt a resolution, designate April as Autism Awareness Month.
Motion to approve that.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, thinking about Commissioner Solis, good morning, Ms. Ellie, how are you?
I was gonna wear all my braces, I just have to have, you know, last night, I was thinking about that, I'm gonna put on my first.
Autism is blue?
Autism, isn't it, there are lots of them in multiple colors, right?
Yeah, they have a di- a different level, but, but, what are you gonna read?
You, you wanna read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, it states, whereas equal has been designated as National Autism Awareness Month by the Autism Society of America, and whereas autism spectrum disorders are classified as a variety of complex disabilities, which include autistic disorder, childhood dysintegrative disorder, pervasive developmental disorder, and asperger syndrome. That is a developmental disability characterized by atypical development in socialization, communication, and behavior. And whereas approximately one in every fifty nine children have been diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. And the prevalence of children with autism has increased and is the fastest growing developmental disability. And whereas autism knows no racial, ethnic, or social boundaries, and neither income lifestyle nor education affects the occurrence. And whereas a single cause is not known, but the need for early intervention services begins soon after a child has been diagnosed with autism. Because early intervention is a key component needed to treat people with autism later in life. And whereas National Autism Awareness Month was conceived to educate the community and celebrate opportunities associated with living, attending school, and working alongside individuals with autism spectrum disorders and their families. And whereas with support, both autism can live full productive lives and make meaningful contributions to society and the community. And now therefore, be it resolved, Zapata County Commissioners Court acknowledges the month of April as Autism Awareness Month, adopted on this twenty sixth day of April twenty twenty one.
Ellie, I just wanna commend you and thank you, I know that you serve on the committee of other parents that have children with autism, and I wanna thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that awareness forward. It is very important, and I think you'll do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to let you know, um, through our fundraisers, that we've had, unfortunately, we haven't had for the past two years, but we have been providing scholarship to, uh, our kids with special needs.
We are, we're doing a great job, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion, Commissioner?
Motion, uh, we already did, just.
Sorry? Commissioner Solis? I started about Commissioner Madol.
Madol.
Mendoza, please, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. We've got, uh, three, uh, legislative session items, uh, the items are, number sixteen is a update on border wall litigation involving the both sanctuaries. Item number seventeen is a catch action regarding personnel matters pertaining to the electronic data processing department. And item number eighteen is a discussion catch action on the finding report there for the Zapata County Library on the extent of damages and repairs to the building. And these will be heard under Government Code Section five five one, point zero seven one, competition with attorney, Government Code five five one, point zero seven two, real property, and Government Code five five one, point zero seven four, personnel matters, we are now in executive session.
Motion to go to the session.